Good evening. It is seven oh two. I'm gonna call the meeting in the board of selectmen order. Our first item of business is to pledge allegiance. Al, you wanna lead us?
Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the board of selectmen are here in present. Our next item of business is the review and approval of our February sixteenth Board of Select and public hearing pertaining to the correctly directed spending options. During the packet, any changes or corrections?
I move to approve. I move to approve the Board of Selectman's public hearing minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Go carries.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Always participation, one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board. If you'd like to speak, please identify yourself by your name and address and state your business. I'll first ask anybody here in the room if they would like to address the board and then provide the same opportunity to anybody online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Yes, you, sir, name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Rock Rock. So I looked over the latest iteration of this blight ordinance that you are gonna discuss tonight. I still have a lot of concerns. For what it's worth. It appears that the property owner has no recourse of any question of what's taking place until after they decide not to pay a fine. So there nowhere here that they say under the blight warning letter. What if the property owner disagrees? Nothing there. Property owner has nothing. That is one person's opinion, one person's pile of whatever evidence they think they have. And that's it, and there's no recourse. And then if you ever get to a hearing, you've already been fined. And you're dealing with a single person's opinion. And then the hearing comes after the blight warning letter. It's on here, let me see, where am I at? Okay, and who presides over the hearing would be a member of the bar. Which by itself is not a necessarily a problem. But that citation hearing officer is another one person judgment. So that's it, two people have to decide that you are a problem and you're a problem and you're all done unless you go to court, which is not reasonable for the average person to go to court, it's too expensive. There's also under blight definitions, more than one inoperative or unregistered vehicle. I totally disagree with that concept. People could have vehicles they're trying to do things with. And they, they've got nothing, okay? Because there's no wiggle room here, there's no exceptions, it's just, you got more than one? You're done. Okay, and under warning citations hearings and fines, the directive actionist shall provide a reasonable amount of time where the property owners could correct the blight. And that is a situation where you have no context. You can't say, no. Not true. It's not correct. And then you have a situation where the blight conditions are corrected eventually within ninety days regardless of weather conditions or any, there's nothing, it's ninety days. And if that happens in early September and you've got snow until February, it may not be possible. Well, you got nothing, these are just not good. Now, my personal opinion is it's my property, not the title property. And I don't really care, I've been in one place since nineteen seventy one. It's the same house I've owned all that time. And now I feel like my ownership is being compromised and that's not acceptable to me. Thank you very much. I deliberate all you gotta do.
Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Yes ma'am, name and address, please.
Patricia Sherry, one one nine Default Street. I'm thinking about the current situation. If you have a car that you're trying to fix up and regenerate and you buy a first car, then that must be in violation. Because there is no registration on it, there's nothing. So that is mostly why I'm against it.
Any other members of the public? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Me Sherry, Default Street. Few points I'd like to make here. If you apply any structure part of the building, which at least fall in existence, okay? I believe state owned property is just totally exempt from this, isn't it?
Yes.
Now, how is this farm land exempted? That's also, I believe, mostly exempt. It's not. You sure about that?
State property would be exempted because it has, the state has sovereignty and municipal code doesn't apply to it.
Okay. And then farm land, I believe also is. Because they have a totally different set of rules, Jason.
We can talk offline, but I think we're gonna agree to disagree on that.
Okay. And the unoperated motor vehicles? Like my wife stated, you know, to fix up a car, a lot of times it takes multiple cars to be taken apart. And if you have, you know, somebody says, hey, I got two cars, you take them home, take them apart. And somebody sees you taking two cars apart to fix your third car? That's total violation and you, and also motor vehicle, an unregistered motor vehicle can be a lawnmower? A tractor? It could be anything, anything with a motor that runs, that can run. It's self compelled, is a motor vehicle. So that in itself. I'll look at all of that and speak some more later on.
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna find out everything right now.
Anybody else in the members of the public want to address the board of selectmen? Is there anyone online who would like to address the board? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and address and state your business.
Hi, Jason Norian Farmer, two forty seven South Water Street.
Good evening.
Hi. Um. The blight ordinance. Um. I appreciate all the effort that got put into it. Um, I think people were tarred on it and had every good intention. I tried to go through it and frankly, I got dizzy with trying to figure out what applies to who and where and what could happen. Um, and yeah, I think there's definite places that it's probably a necessity for. But I don't know if we kind of went way too far with it. Um. I know I had some issues with the whole thing of grass being too long and I'm, I'm really not even sure if that got taken care of. Um. And again, I think everybody's intention was good and I think a lot of hard work went into it, but I, I think maybe um. It's, it's just a little too much. Um. In a lot of respects, so I'm not sure if it could be toned back down a little bit or, or more directed to the things we truly are trying to go after. Um. But again, I just kind of got lost trying to go through the whole thing. And if you can get lost just trying to figure it out, I think there's gonna be a lot of people who get possibly citations and can't even figure out where they're going. Um. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else online who would like to address the board? Okay, we'll come back to this. Uh. We'll have another public comment session later on. So I have a number of communications I wanted to draw your attention to in the packet. The first is the budget message that I drafted on behalf of this board after we completed our budget deliberation process. It goes second by section based on what is required in the town charter. Nothing too exciting there, but just so you guys all see the document that I put together, I wanted to include that, it's also available on the town website. The twenty twenty three vendor in place program, the state of Connecticut is looking to install or is this one centerline robo scripts along, along its three five, which should help anybody who inadvertently crosses into oncoming traffic. Um, they are just asking for acquiescence to that approach along that state highway and to waive a public hearing on the, on the notion.
If you respond to this?
I don't believe I have yet. So unless there's objection, I'm gonna indicate that we agree and we're not gonna seek a public period. The next item is correspondence from Secretary Beckham pertaining to the request I submitted to waive the penalties associated with not filing the property revow last year. This completes the process that we need to do in order to, to delay that by a year. The secretary has granted our request for a waiver. He included a copy of the statute that was cited, a copy of my letter requesting that that waiver be considered and then the statement that was put out after this board decided on the first faction. So that's just an FYI, but it's also to let you know that that process has now been closed. We have a couple of, we have one reappointment and one new appointment. Ruth, were you able to reach out to Mr. Bell?
Um. No.
Okay. With the boards involved, I'd like to hold this until our April sixth meeting, if we could?
I'll move to postpone item seven B one until our next meeting, April sixth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We do have a request for a new appointment. Kathleen Pippen is asking to be appointed to be inland wetlands and water courses agency. She cites that she attends most of those meetings anyway. Her husband is a seated member. Any discussion or voting?
I'll make a motion to accept the appointment on Kathleen Pippen as an alternate to the East Windsor water, what is it? In the land, wetland, water repose.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
I will attest that she's been to about five hundred meetings.
Only way you could do that is if you also have the
handle order.
Yes.
You have to include the expiration date or the
Some elected positions, so I think it's going to expire with the next regular election. Wetlands, is that alike?
Nope, no, but we've never
Okay, yeah, if you would mind amending your motion to include the expiration date, which is February sixth, twenty twenty four.
I'll amend the motion for term expiration separate since twenty twenty four.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded on the amended motion, all in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
The amended motion is now in front of you on the appointment, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So period. Ms. Calabrese? Would you like to do a, an explanation for some of the permanently mows for the development of the land use model?
We remember, I don't know how long ago now. I have provided an outline to the group of permit module. The permit module to track the land use permits that are currently on paper. They have a lot of detail, a lot of administrative deadlines and whatnot. So it would be a computer module to track that. And we had received a quotes from permanent link to do this, but the benefit we get from the engagement is we get a tailored module that we help with the input of what we want this to be. And then at a very discounted price, but then the permanently closed gets to sell it to other municipalities. So then the win win. So I put tabs on two pages of interest, one is the fees that they've quoted. And the other is the data extraction. The last time I was here, there was, that was the concern was we needed legal to review the contract for data extraction. And that's the first path that's, that's in there, so we will be able to get our information back. All the attachments to applications will have those readily available on our server as well as in the system. And then extracting any forms that the computer generates, we can print off at any time and save them to a server. Or if we needed to extract them, if we canceled our our arrangement with permanent link, they could do that for us for a fee, we'll see that in the section. And the reason for the delay in the, in the contract review, we were kind of crossing wires and thinking that the license, the green placements agreement for the software was the service agreement. And so the part of between our town attorney's office and permanent length, apparently they were kind of thinking different things. But we ended up on a spot where our attorneys were good with the service contract and the data retrieval portion.
One of the concerns that I had that I asked her to make sure was included was, was the opportunity for us to retain ownership over our information. You'll all recall when we transitioned over from our previous company to this one, we actually had to get litigious in terms of, of extracting the data back. So that concern has been incorporated into, into the documents.
Of course, been on the cost factors, you know, because annual costs is twenty five hundred except for years two and three, it's gonna be this time.
So we're paying a fee for the coders and the module. And then we are getting a discounted fee, the twenty, twenty five hundred is an annual service fee for updates and support. So it really won't incur that fee until the module is finished and up.
My recollection is that Amy has confirmed the funding for this is in your budget. And then the twenty five hundred dollar annual fee, I think, is in the IP budget. If it's not in the
We put it in my budget. In mine.
Okay.
So I just had a question about the extraction. I said, so you plan to pay a hundred dollars for each permit type before needing the extraction, if you see it's fifteen. I mean, do you have that many types, fifteen different?
So the permit types are gonna be wetlands.
Okay.
Cyclone, special use, so there's not that many.
Yeah, so Buildings too, right? Those five or six different
This is separate module.
I guess.
Licensing, but what size is this all considered as a contract for the
Okay, we're confused now. How I got two things for the same?
So I'm excited to get started on, you know, mountain line that you have to get together, we shared. It's nothing. Um, you know, you've had a couple of instances already since this that I think would have been caught. You know, logical up and around, so.
And that's the end of this final thing is making more knowledge to be tracking.
Permit expiration dates and conditions of approval and getting reminders and form letters that will go out to applicants when they're
Just remind us on phases and the different stages, like we, you know, like you said, conditions, so like erosion control, like a reminder to go check all these five open permits.
Yeah, it does have that passing feature. And we'll create automatic emails to permit holders as well as staff and even have templates for, for approval letters and stuff.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw you. Do you have a motion?
We'll make a motion to, sorry, I'm gonna find my, where I am again, to authorize the first selectman to sign the point software license agreement and the permit length services contract as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A period. Thank you. Um. It's not in the blight ordinance. Ken and Ruth, or Ruth and Ken, I'm not sure how you guys are tagging in this. So you've gone back to the drawing board, there's a new iteration in front of us, we're perching public comment on it already. Are, are there points you wanna make about it?
Well, the first point I wanted to make about it. The effort was to simplify. We spent an awful lot of time working together to hone in on the definition of what it's like in the previous version that I have marked final for public hearing. Hopeful. But then I, I, you know, recognized it got cumbersome and towards the end, there was some kind of kind of reroute process and speaking what all was for the order of inspections. And our legal counsel said that was statute driven and to leave that be. But I also went back to an email that I had received from Brian McCann, who's one of our attorneys at Pullman. With, uh, this is kind of a model blight ordinance.
What's in our
Not tailored to us, yeah, that's
Right.
So what it basically did, and I think maybe we did not thinking the impact. It's slightly over two pages for the ordinance itself. And then the memorandum of law is based on the statutes as follows. What's the process, how would this get to work? So this would be something that would guide staff and the whoever's implementing the blight ordinance as to what the statutes would say would be next. So it seemed like an easier thing to digest with two and a half pages. And it would everything we had put into the first strap.
Okay, and that was when I was reading through this, I was like, wait a minute, this isn't our blight ordinance, this is just basically a description of many of the items and the processes in the blight ordinance.
Correct, the memo?
Yes.
Yes, so the ordinance itself is two hundred pages.
The last three pages are not adapted.
Yeah, I was a little confused by that myself and then I was questioning where it said, just find it here, sorry.
We don't have an actual, I'm sorry.
No, it's good. Blight department. Does that mean we're establishing a blight department or is this just as a, as a reference?
Template, it's
Okay. Okay.
Cause they also have the trans light prevention officer.
Right.
Alan, was your question gonna be, we don't actually have the original. We don't have the final in our packet, right? Right.
Oh, this one, first one?
Yeah, so that's why we were all confused, right? Well, we have it from past, but actually I could make a copy. Cause I don't know if it's changed since we last
That's the one. Who's got it?
Yeah. Cause I don't know if it's changed since we last seen it. It's, there were recommendations of changes to that as well. And whether those happened or not, we don't know now.
Yeah, I was kind of confused because then I thought, well, what happened to all the work that we did? Because now I'm looking at this, I'm like, this is different to me and there's a lot of areas that I not in agreement with. So I was like, do we just change the whole entire thing? It's kind of a pitch to, would you wanna see something two and a half pages?
Right. Yeah, I really, yeah, I think this is great. You know, to, cause it's like lays it out and it was a little dictionary for everybody.
Yeah.
Right, you know, yeah, and I agree that the ordinance itself must
Yeah, we put a, the context around it better. Um, but yeah, the intention is, yes, we still have this.
Okay.
And getting copies for you. And we can go through, the grass is out.
Thank you.
Our town attorney said that juice wasn't worth the space.
It's saying that, it's three months now.
That's my parent, right? He didn't use any of those words, but that one I took away. So there it is, it's out.
So while we're waiting on Alan, can we discuss? I didn't see him come back. Okay, so can we discuss vehicles?
Yep.
And since that seems to be a hard concern, and it is for me as well, because it does seem and I understand how it can be blight and, and certainly I've seen it as blight. But at the same time, I understand the the disappointment of citizens in seeing this in there. That number one, vehicle can be interpreted as a lot of different things. It could be lawnmowers, it could be tractors, it could be cars. And certainly no one wants to live next to a junkyard regardless of whether it's tractors, cars. But it's done in a manner where it doesn't appear as a junkyard and you are a collector of, you know, nineteen sixty five Chevy Chevels and you have five of them because you're trying to make one that will someday be operable. What is the avenue to circumvent this as being, that is being blight? To appease both the town disordments and the person who owns those five vehicles that they're trying to make whole into one? Um, you know, is there a simple registration of Um, you know, is there a simple registration of, hey, I'm, I'm, um. I can't really say they're a repair shop. Um, is that would change zoning and everything.
Yeah, right now, the zoning requires vehicles to be registered or within a structure in a garage. So if you had a hobby garage and you have. Three or four vehicles.
Mm hmm.
And I would say that if you're storing, um, what you have and it's not. Pause for complaint. We wouldn't be looking, you know, we're not gonna be turning stone looking.
Right, just to to bring back up on what I think Charlie is saying there. And and I just looked it up, it's in section four oh four of the rec. It is in the recs, so does it need to be in the blight ordinance too?
That, yeah, so. That was the other thought I was having, which was if it came out of blight, if it were issue, it would be picked up by zoning.
Okay. Okay, so we could reason zoning has a enforcement. Right, and it does, which it does. So we could remove that from this altogether and it would still be covered under zoning and already is covered under zoning. I turn it on. It's just one of those things where. You know, in, there's only one major instance I could see where it could be. A hazard. Or two, one is environmentally, which there are other avenues to go after that person if that's the case. You know, he's got five cars and three of them are leaking oil and gasoline into the ground because they're rusting their way. So there's other avenues to address that without being here. The other would be. Say there's so many cars on the property that fire and. First responder personnel can't get on the property without getting injured because they're tripping over car parts. Um, I would guess there's another avenue for tackling that. If. It wasn't in here, is that correct?
I, I wouldn't know. Yeah, see, I wouldn't know another avenue. I mean, if if you have one, for example. Um. Because. If if there, let's, for example, you were saying if somebody had five cars.
Mm hmm.
Right? Um, but zoning said they have to be registered.
Yeah.
And. Inside enclosed.
Or included.
You know, either one.
Yes.
Um. I guess that would be fine.
Right.
But if, um, the only thing I could see is somebody complaining about that is if all five cars are outside, they can park the parts right over there. Maybe the neighborhood like that.
Right.
I don't know.
Right.
Um, that's where, I don't know, zoning could take care of that part. And maybe that's where the light would pick that up. I'm not sure. And I I wouldn't, you know. It's a fine line. I see exactly what you're saying. Anyway, it's a, it's a fine line.
You know, I I mean, the case that was brought to a suburban session, I I've seen the actual, you know, circumstance. And to me, it's not, it's not blight, it's. It's just, you know, a couple of cars parked on the person's property. And it's not something I want to seize, you know, gone after. And I understand, we we are at liberty always enforcement to determine, yes. But in a way, you have to be fair and you have to be kind of equal across the board because you can't accuse one person and not. Go after them and then do it to another. So, you know, I understand where you have to be fair with it. Um. And you're not likely to go after that circumstance unless it's brought to your attention. Um. But I, you know, I just, I don't know, I feel like there should be some, either it should just come out altogether and. It's covered under another avenue. Or. We change how it's worded. I have one thought that came to mind was. You know, more than one inoperative or unregistered vehicle, or change it to not one, but maybe two. Um. And. I mean, this says vehicles and it was also brought to our attention that motor, that it said motor vehicle, which it does not, but it says vehicle, but that could be interpreted as many different items. Um. But my one thought was adding not covered or stored. Whereas if you had four vehicles on the property, but you had maybe a purple for every single one. You know, they're covered, they're contained, they're not. You know. Or if you bought a portable tent, put them all in. They're stored, they're not. For everyone to see.
And that's also us. I don't know, I feel like that's infringing on people's rights at their home to tell them they have to have it in a tent. I mean, I, and then I think that's.
Well, you're not saying if you're telling them they can't have the five vehicles.
Yeah.
So.
So if I could back up to those, maybe a slightly higher level and and Charlie, I don't mean to get off your point, but.
I don't know.
Despite, no, but. Um. The concern that was raised about what is a motor vehicle, I mean, if if, when we get to a a more applied draft on this, if that were to say. As as registered by the Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles. That that's, they don't register one owners, you know, so I mean, you're talking now about a vehicle used for transport. Um. So I think there's some definitional stuff with statutory references that can kind of clear the decks on that.
Yeah, I didn't think of that.
Um. I think that. I mean, personally, this, if if, if we have a mechanism of enforcing something over, then I think that should be part of the reason that that is. Like, so for example, if it's covered by zoning regs.
Right.
Should be using the zoning.
Right.
Getting back to, so. I personally like this approach a lot better than what we have been working on in the past, the. What I, what I have been colloquially referred to as the skinny blight ordinance.
Mm hmm.
Because the the last three pages of this are much more understandable to most people.
Mm hmm.
And I think that in itself provides a better uh foundation on which to build. Um. The. Well, I don't want to give any subtle comments here, because this is, you still have a talking stick and I just, I stole it, so. I have, I have some thoughts of my own while while you guys are are going, so I'll hold on.
Okay, so. And then now that I have this back in front of me, you can, um, I also believe that. In this portion. If we're going to include this, that this purpose thing needs to totally be changed. Now, I wrote something up, but granted, I only did it an hour ago. I've only had. Two days to look at this, so I haven't had time to spend on it. But. I think that the purpose should be stated something more in the lines of. The play horns is designed to protect the citizens of East Windsor, renters, first responders and other town officials. In protecting first responders, so that they're not seriously injured or killed in responding to a situation at a home. Um, health and town officials where they're also not injured. Um. And where tenants and renters can find themselves, and this may be covered under zoning, I don't know. But if tenants and renters are faced with blight situations that they can't get resolved through their leasur. That they have an avenue in which it protects them. And then also, it should be for neighbors having difficulty trying to sell their homes or feel their property value has been diminished. Due to the proximity of a plated property, this ordinance is designed to protect the town of East Windsor and its citizens from such outcomes caused by blight. And that the ordinance is not designed to standardize a form of living or appearance within the town. Its objective is to eliminate injury or death caused by blight. That's what I believe our blight should serve for the town, not a standard of living. Like Long Metal has or East Long Metal has, where you can't leave your trash cans out for more than six hours after the guy comes and picks them up. Because it's considered blight and they want every single house and property to look the same. That's not what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to accomplish safety for both our towns, people, first responders. And in the few instances where where we have heard actual reports of people finding that they can't sell their home or had difficulty selling their home. Because their neighbor's yard looks like Sanford and Son. So that's what I believe our purpose should be, and it should be stated as such. Um.
There, there, you brought up a good point there about the renter. Um. If there's a renter and their. And their landlord at light.
Right.
What I'm finding is just the opposite.
Okay.
Okay, the renters.
Is the one causing it?
That that they're, it it's hoarding situations with light, garbage, and we can do nothing about it.
Okay.
And it's, it. And there's one particular property that is, uh, very bad, but I. You know, I'm getting called, I can't do anything about it. Uh, it's. So it's things like that, that that was a good point.
Hmm.
Um, but we also would have to do the reverse as well.
Okay, and that's easy to change that, wanting to say that, but. But I believe that's what it should. That's which our purpose, that's my purpose anyways, for these ordinance. Um, is, you know, for someone like you or the police department to have some teeth when they need it. To to address these situations, not for, you know, the guy who's had a grudge with his neighbor for the last eight years to go after his neighbor. That's, that's not the intent of this. That's, that's all I have.
I thought that was an excellent point. Yeah, that's good.
So I I have that. It's roughly typed up and it's got issues, but it's, if anybody wants it, I can ask.
I think you should to to read at least.
Thank you.
There's, yeah. I could just.
Thank you for putting that together.
Tag on to the end of his comments.
Yeah.
I looked through our planning and zoning regulations and I didn't actually see anything on automobiles, but what we do have is an ordinance. So we might want to double check that ordinance and see what it, if it, I mean, it is what it is already, you know.
That's why we we went through this exercise, and it's not compliant, this state's good.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, because there's nothing in our regulating, like, regulations. That I can see, I just did some searches and like automobile, car, unregistered, and it's not coming up in.
Your motor vehicle, it's section four oh four.
So, so is this. You know. Light definition C, is that straight in Connecticut CGS? Is that where that comes from? Or did we adopt that from the town? The more than one inoperative or unregistered vehicle?
Um, the one that came from Brian. Yeah, see, that I think Brian, this is what's used in in Nor, Norwalk.
Okay, so it's not necessarily the way the state defines it. Okay.
Certainly.
I mean, I, I really like what Charlie came up with. I agree that that really should be the direction we're going on with this, not, you know. Having people conform their property to the, just infringing on people's rights. I I think it should be focused on, um. Health and safety, so I thought that was really good. Um, I'm also, I do also have an issue with C about the inoperative or unregistered vehicles, um. But then I also found. Um, on page two, warnings, citations, hearings, fines under A, I just find where it says. Provide a reasonable amount of time for the property owner to correct the blight. To me, that's too vague and open to interpretation. Um.
Now, in a situation like that, say, you know. Say, the sighting officer says, okay, you have thirty days to clean up that mess, whatever the mess may be. And then they come back thirty days and maybe a third of it is done. Now, can't that person, doesn't that person given the opportunity to say, well, yes, I started working on it, but, you know, I. I ran out of room in the dumpster and I have to rent another one, but I don't really have the money right now and I I gotta, you know, it's gonna take me another month to rent. Is that gonna be given leeway and and documentation or?
I rented that in South Windsor, um, often.
Yeah.
So. One particular property had, it was really bad, this. Really, everything you just said and then some, right? So, um. So the guy did have the money. But he was just fighting with us.
Okay.
So we, I just wouldn't fight back.
Yeah.
I would just talk to her.
Yeah.
And eventually we met at his, he goes, okay, I'm gonna start.
Yeah.
He said, what kind of timeframe do I have? So we give him and then.
Yeah.
And then. He would call me up and say, listen, I got some done. There's no way I can get it all done by that day. And I said, okay, let's take a look.
Okay.
I mean, again. And eventually it just worked. Right? It's it, it's not the handoff from people.
Right.
She did, let's work together on this.
And I can think of examples in both your department and your department. Recently, where that same same approach has been employed. And the end result has been we're getting compliance with issues that have been lingering for a really long time.
So are you doing it on a case by case basis and that's how you're coming up with the amount of time? Or is every situation different? Or do you typically give everybody a cert, like thirty days or?
I think every person was different, so.
I know.
You, you know, it was really, because that's what we're dealing with, right? So it's. If. I go up to one person, I say, yep, gotta clean it up until it's done in five days. Right? Cause they're just motivated to get it done. They just wanted them. They don't want to deal with it. And then there's other people that it's. They got emotional issues, maybe with some of their stuff. They got a flying place for it. I get it, you know? I get it, it's not. Again, we're not, we're not cops, we're just.
Right.
We're just trying to help facilitate situation and make it better.
And and I understand Sarah's point is, it's tough to.
It should be fair for everybody, is my point.
And and I hate asking things like this that are open to interpretation, but I agree with you. It's a case by case basis. All of these situations are different, the people are different. The material that you're dealing with may be different, you may run across hazmat material, then you say, oh, well, now I gotta call, you know, um. Environmental services to help me clean this up, you know, or something like that. So every case is different and I hate, you know, putting forth something. That could be open to interpretation, but I think in this instance, we kind of have to leave that. Because you're gonna have different scenarios and different cases every time.
I'm gonna just underscore that, you know, somebody's making an effort. Then there's. There's, we can say, and even with this recent car that Danielle has led. Blanketing them all the same way.
Yeah.
Going door to door. Walking through the sides and she gets, you know. She has like two or three that she's still working on, they're, they're gonna come.
Oh, I'll have to pay attention when I drive to work then.
Okay.
And look, again, because I usually watch as, oh, that guy's a violation, that.
Most people want, want to please and of course you're gonna have a handful of. You know, really?
No, I I think a rule of, a good rule of thumb for them is if they have to actually unload their cars on room five. Because they can't get that car truck in the parking lot, that's a red flag. You got too many cars in the lot.
Well, that's.
Right.
You know, she can't drive her little Honda from there.
Yeah, we can't get a fire truck in that.
She says.
This is her full, this next comment I'm gonna make. Uh, in the definitions, there's a yard vegetation definition, you can probably take that out now because she took out the other thing, which I thank you very much.
Where is that?
Yes, so there's no confusion.
Where are you looking?
Where is that?
Where are you?
Well, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Right, she's. Down in the trees.
Oh, it's in, yeah, in article two.
Oh, you're, you're in the, a reword draft, I see.
So, um. Page five. Of the draft.
So on the, um. On on the point that that Sarah and Charlie were just discussing on the the reasonable amount of time. What if we were to change that to say, um, and shall be remedi- remediated or caused to be remediated within thirty days, which may be extended with good faith efforts to remediate the blended conditions on the part of the property owner. Which may be extended with good faith efforts to remediate the blended conditions on the part of the property owners. So you have a thirty day period, but you also have the degree of reasonableness standard where you can say like, there's a foot of snow on the ground. Um or, you know, I got this, my my apartment building caught fire and I'm. Somebody is displaced and and I'm worried about finding them shelter before I can, you know, shovel out the ash. At least if we had that, because I'm trying to apply your friendly, the friendly reminders that Danielle does. And say like, okay, there's there is a a timeline and a date certain, and then she takes it to the next step. But there's also instances where somebody's trying to come into compliance and you don't take it to the next step because we can see that they're working on it. And I'm and then I'm trying to figure out how to like write that language. So that it says, we're gonna do it after thirty days unless we don't have to. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. My head's all plugged up.
But we could put some language in there for a time, for a timeframe that everyone has to make. You know, when taken by case by case basis, there's some people that are just, there's no way, you know, they're they're gonna be able to meet that timeline. So we just work with that. It's better to do that. And get progress and get to the end goal. Even if it takes much longer.
Can I, can I um? I have three questions. Under the definition of blight, uh letter E.
We're talking, are you looking in the memorandum of law or the blight ordinance?
I'm I'm looking in the three pager um at the back of the memorandum. So um it says that uh the blight. The following conditions exist, the property has been cited for more than two code violations in the past, which have not been corrected and are not the subject of a pending appeal. How is that a blank con- concern?
I read that as a building.
So, so.
Yeah, that's what I was saying is, it's um. It'd be something more like that and and maybe in the safety side of it.
So if I have a boarded up window. And I've been cited for that twice. Under this ordinance. Right? So I've already been, so that seems like we're just continuing the citation. It 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 seems circuitous to me when I was, when I was reading it.
It's I think what it is, it doesn't become blight until. Multiple times, you know, so. You know, we had a complaint, let's get this done, and if it's in a blank.
Okay, well, it's cited. You've been cited, but you haven't. You go there and say, hey, look, I gotta complain, wanna do something about it and gotta say, uh yeah, you know what, I'll take care of that. All right, well, as long as you're gonna take care of it, we don't have to go any further, but then you have to show up, because two weeks later, it's not taken care of. Like, you don't have to write. Um a warning letter even, right, like, it says May, like, like you have that discretion under the way, and I'm back at the actual ordinance.
You know, and then if um. We drive by, let's say thirty days later. Um and it's gonna, or we get a complaint thirty days later. And it's not done, I think, then that's your second time.
So I I think a lot, for me, I looking at the ordinance again, there, and I'm looking at procedure. And everything is May, there's no shadow, right, so. I think that's good, and so it shows some discretion and be. Um levied it for this, but, and this was brought up before and I'm still not a hundred percent comfortable and I don't know how else we could word this. But um three dash one B under procedure, article three, page six of the blight. Uh inspections, the PMO may inspect any property premises or the buns of received complaint. For any property premises, which is to be believed to be blighted. Excuse me, or for any property premises which is believed to be blighted for which no complaint has been received. Basically saying you could just drive around and say. Or cite you, I see blight, I'm gonna cite you, where I think, I think a lot of people will take offense to that. I'm wondering if there's a different way we can do that, if we can tighten that up a little bit. Oh, can I give an example of that though, Alan?
Yeah, I I mean.
So I'm in article three of the ordinance, yeah, three dash one procedure, B inspection, sorry, thank you. So what if like that person, you know, really didn't have neighbors, they're they're, it's all woods around them, or they own a. Tremendous amount of property that is, you know, wooded dead end street, for example. And you're not getting the complaints, but yet it still poses a hazard to buyer safety. Or, here's a good example, right over here on Main Street, down behind the hill. You have a mill that's falling apart, no one can really see it from the road. No one complains about it much, but it's a seriously blighted property and it's a serious danger and hazard to both. First responders and there's been also kids cited in their plane and messing around, so. Okay, I could see that, so the cops get called because there's kids running around on private property that is blighted, and it's a danger. The blight officer could go over there and cite that company for blight. And in that case, they would have to build a better fence. Provide security.
Have you seen that fence lately?
I don't know, I'm just, you know, hypothesizing here, you know, I'm trying to try to figure out what, like. It's because, and as I said before, and I think was mentioned by Paul some time ago, um. And maybe others, you know, that seemed like, you know, it's given a lot of power, but I'm I'm trying to, I'm looking for the other side of the story, right? Where there's situations where you may want that lead, that leadway. So I don't know if there's any other, if you have any other suggestions of. Or experiences in South Windsor where you felt it was necessary. To, you saw like you were out on an inspection for a house and on the way there you saw something that was. You know, dangerous or.
Well, I see that all the time, but a better example, I think, is um. Recently, I got called to a home, somebody renting rooms out. In a single family home, he shouldn't have been doing that. Um so I got called by the health department. Um so we took the bar marshal myself. And health department on that out there. Um and it was, the yard was trashed, right, I mean, the stuff around and everything, it was just, it was hard to walk. The basement was that way, inside the house wasn't that bad. So. I found multiple things as I'm going along and I, that's, that's a case where I would have said, now I couldn't get close to the house. Right, if anything should have ever happened, um these officers or firemen. Uh EMTs needed to get to a certain area, they couldn't get there. Uh without getting hurt, especially. Then I would have called it out and said, listen, you gotta clean this up. You know, for me to drive by a place, just to drive by a place, to say, hey, you've gotta clean that up. No, I that that's.
No, and I and I believe it, I'm just, I'm looking at this as as people read it and the fears that they may have, so I'm wondering. Because I I think that's an excellent example as well as yours, but so I'm wondering if we can somehow change that par- that sentence. Which is, you know, which the, which instead of which is believed, which is kind of vague, which the, I would say, which the PMO believes. To be blighted. It's something about a dangerous situation that, or a situation that would be dangers, like you were saying before, to first responders. Occupants of the house, because in that case where it's number one, an illegal boarding house, number two, those people. That's another level of danger for the people that are there, so I see that, so I I think we should tighten that to add something about life safety, danger. That, you know, so. So I think it makes it clear what our intention is.
Jason, I need to ask a question before they leave. Ruth mentioned a two and a half page document, she's nine pages. Where's the two and a half page document?
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
This is the code.
I'm looking at what I was handed.
Yeah, right, no, we're talking about the code, the ordinance is two pages. So this is, the ordinance refers to the code.
There is something that's, there's a document that's titled. Memorandum of law?
Yeah, I have that in my hand. And it has no page one, and there's a page two, and there's a page three. And that's it.
Right, but this one that Alan just printed? The blight ordinance itself is only two pages. The rest of it is all just definitions. Explaining.
Doesn't matter.
Part of ordinance itself.
That is the ordinance that the definitions are part of it, are they not? I'm very confused and I'm trying to follow.
The the template ordinance that.
That's not what I have. I don't know if anybody bought it.
That was not in the packet. So the ordinance itself, this one.
Where's the ordinance begin? I have that, but I don't understand how that can be the beginning of an ordinance. When it's that something like that.
So this is like.
That's that's how the.
I have no clue.
Yeah, and and what's this nine page thing?
That's we've been working on all along.
I know that. But I thought this was replacing it.
Just point out while they're going through that. Mr. Sherry's comment is actually correct. Since, does.
Okay, Mr. Sherry, I did direct it on your point earlier.
For farmland? Yeah, farmland is exacted. Yeah, you said.
He was right. At one time, everybody, this recorder, right?
Will the time Jason here?
Not exactly, the references to this to me are a waste of time. This is what you have in your selectment package, and I thought that's what's being discussed. And now you are doing this as well.
And that is the genesis. That is a memorandum of law, that's the.
I'm told that the ordinance is the last three pages.
Then that, a complete, that's a template for what that is right there. Just throw that away.
This doesn't agree with this in any way, shape or form.
That's because we've changed it because of things you said.
No, this existed. Couple days ago, I got this. And it doesn't relate to this in any way, shape or form. This has incredible amounts of data and requirements that we had in the past. And this to me is absolutely never gonna pass. This almost makes sense. Why are we talking about this? This is not an ordinance. This to me is not even a proposed ordinance. This is what the proposed ordinance is, and if you take this away, you go back to this. Then. My comments are useless, I'm commenting on something you have, and the bottom line is, all my previous comments apply to the other pile of garbage. That you'll never get past, period.
So I'm detecting some frustration.
I'm telling you that there is no possibility. Of a blight maintenance officer coming on the private property, having more authority than anybody else in the damn world. It is not going to happen, you will never pass anything that says it, so this other nine page piece.
Well, you gotta settle down. I'm gonna shut this down, so it goes right back to the normal course, which is us and staff. Right? I get the chirp set, we're not, I don't believe we're going to vote on this tonight, because there are some changes that have already been suggested. We hear you.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Just to pick up where somebody left off, I've been driving around town, just because I know all. It's late, and your meetings, and you put out what you have complaints on. I know other people are upset, there's things that the fire department has pointed out at the house over that you can't get on the deck and all that kind of stuff, I I get all that. Then I started driving around, I'm saying, all right, if I wanted to spread out people in the world that have nothing better to do, I'm gonna drive around town today. What have we been finding? I started that when we had the um. Location of uh uh recreational vehicles, uh campers and that kind of stuff. Have assigned the houses versus behind the house and all of that, and went through and said, that's gonna be a problem for us. Because a lot of people have their campers on the side of their yard, some of them haven't been in the front of the yard, depending on how big their front yard is and stuff. That's a problem, that's, doesn't affect anybody, it's not a health concern, it's not a safety concern in my.
It's already in zoning.
It's in zoning, but they corrected it. I'm driving around because we said, you know, boarded up windows. And I've driven around, um and I see a lot of different style houses that. Particularly the basements have. Boards on them, um I don't know if that's because the window broke and then I haven't had a chance to repair it yet, or. If it's somebody that doesn't wanna have glass in the bottom, um because they've been broken into, um. It doesn't affect anyone, I mean, if it is, in my opinion. And I think that's gonna create a problem, when you look at chimneys and you look at cracks in the foundation, we have a lot of older homes. Um in parts of this town, where you're going to have a chimney that's. Might need some caulking done, so you know, if I decide I'm not adjacent today, well. I'm gonna rat you out because you got a crack over here on this thing, you got a crack over here, but it doesn't affect anybody but him. So that's where I'm getting hung up on some of the details. I get it if, you know, if 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 it's a construction building, um and they've got bricks falling off the chimney and hitting people on the sidewalk. But if it's not gonna affect anybody, you have no business being anybody's property unless. You're invited on their property and that's a liability and they're sure we'll cover it, I'm not so sure if we didn't go too far. For this type of town, but we're different than Long Meadow, we're different than the city, um. So I I'm I'm just struggling overall um with it, um.
What you, you, I think if I could chime in, what what you just said, most of those items. Would I think fall the building code, not the blight. However, if, if I saw a boarded up basement window. So the reason why basement windows exist. It's because. They're supposed to be for ventilation. Right, that's code. Because that's where most of your mechanicals are. Both every five hundred square feet, gotta have one. So that's code. If it's boarded up and it seems like it's a dangerous situation. Where they have old equipment downstairs, I would ask them to fix it at the same. Where they have old equipment downstairs, I would ask them to fix it at the same time I was there for the blight. Um, I, I wouldn't force them to fix it in any other situation. Um, and I don't know, I'm making it worse by saying.
Just cuz I know it's gonna come up.
Um, it was, I'm sure a lot of things are gonna come up, but I mean, most of it's building stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and unless I'm called out as a building official, I can't force somebody, as a building official, I have no right to walk on somebody's property and say, you gotta fix that one. None. I can't do that.
Like, and I believe in this, even in this, it says. Blight enforcement officer will not go on property, they will take pictures from where they can from the street.
Right.
Or if invited by a neighbor, who may be made the complaint. There's nothing in here that says you can go on anyone's property, and you can't, it doesn't, you don't have that right, and it's not in here that gives you that right.
No, and it, you know, it, one thing if, um. We, we have to enter a property. For, for situation. Yeah.
Right.
Which, exactly what she said.
Cause I could maybe tag along. And, and go and force on.
Yeah, I can do that.
And to your point, Marie, that's why I strongly believe that the purpose of this needs to be like I stated, it has to be about safety. If it's not about safety, then should we really be going after it? And to me, the answer is no.
I agree with that.
I agree. So if it's, yeah, it looks terrible. Because you've got a boarded window. Okay, it looks terrible, but is it a safety problem? Now, if it's a fire escape, and you have the window screwed boarded shut, then yeah, it's a safety issue. Um, especially if every window in places that way, um. But, you know, if you have a basement window that's boarded up, because it got broken, or because, you know, raccoons were hitting in that way. Then I, I don't see that as blocking. Or a safety issue.
See, can we, the ordinance, when it was being done, always looking at like to me, we've had this conversation, was the old house on the old road that had something sold and redone. Um, grass was way high, there was garbage here, garbage stairs, that building was found on that kind of thing. Um, or if we go right here on Main Street, there's a particular house that I look at it, um, and I say, you know, why hasn't something been done with that house? Um, having been in that house thirty-five years ago, in the condition that it looked in, I gotta believe it's not any better, but it's worse, um. That would take away from the neighbors trying to sell the property, I get that, um. But. I, some of it is just, but the way you're explaining it. As long as we can explain it that way to the public, that, you know, yeah, in this sense, it doesn't make any, any big deal, we're not gonna address it, but over here it does. Um, your example is with the boarded up window. I get that now, I didn't get that when I was driving around, you know, um.
I think if you put the the purpose. And suddenly I don't. You know. Emphasization of the check and balance would be, that citation wouldn't pass on appeal if it weren't related.
Right.
And that would keep someone from wasting their shot, giving citation for something that wasn't gonna pass.
Right, way, right, like it should be.
And that's where, what you're saying, under two point two on page five, um. Where it says that any condition which may pose a serious threat to health, safety, and welfare of the town should be free, um. It's in there, so. I guess I might play with it then.
Meant to bring it, I did not, and I looked online, I don't see it listed in your meeting materials for planning and zoning meetings, but, but the Excel sheet that shows all the current open blight things that we can't deal with, I wanted I wanted to bring that through this discussion, it's on my desk, I thought. I don't know, but there's like eight or nine of those on those.
Kind of, yeah.
That are specifically looking at this blight, so I think it's important, but, so I'm a little confused. We have. This is not an invitation for you to get mad again. But we have the memorandum of law, which the last three pages are a template. We have the draft we've been working on, which one should be me working on now?
If, so here's, here's my thought, and I'm just off the cuff. Um. I really like the statement of purpose that, that Jerome put together, uh, and, and, you know, he said he, he did that kind of you know, off the cuff, and that there's some tweaking, but I think generally speaking, that, that's, that's the direction I'm comfortable going. What I would then like to do is use the template that was provided by Attorney McCann and included in the packet. And adapt this to the template. So, for example, one of the things that, that was raised publicly is, is the, uh. Populous definition of space included here. If we could just, I would actually adopt mostly the definitions on page two of the, uh, sample ordinance that was included at the back of the memorandum of law. Adopt these definitions, and the process that's outlined in the working draft that we've been working.
Okay, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that draft.
Well, and then it needs to be tuned up so that everything like works.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that's how we're gonna hone this in a bit, I also think, as a matter of reference. If this, if this gets adopted by the county, we also need to incorporate the memorandum of law to explain how all of this works.
Right.
So you'd have, you'd have the, the ordinance and the addendum to the ordinance. Publicly available and understood at the time. Does that seem like it's getting there?
And, and I think that's important too, because you may have to change that.
And that's the whole problem that I was here to get.
Exactly.
So.
I think it's, uh, something that you're probably gonna work with our, right, so. It's always gonna be, we can make this better, hope we can get rid of this, you know, we're gonna find things. And I think, um. Even after, you know, say, we gotta make this better, so, or we can eliminate this part.
Well, one thing that I, I do to, to the point that's, points that have been raised, I do wanna take out one seat, I, I think that's covered other ways in that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and the melding is gonna, I don't know, hopefully we can do without too many drafts, but like, the section in the ordinance draft that we have now that specifically exempts farming property, I think needs to make it into the new draft as well, it's not mentioned in the template.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Wait, doesn't, aren't you covered by that under CGS?
No.
Oh, you're not, that's a town zoning thing?
That's, so yeah, and that's, that's where Wayne and I were, were of different mind, but I wasn't thinking about this draft, I was thinking about the, whether uh, farming was exempted as state properties are exempted from local controls.
You know, that's a kind of loopholes to it, but I don't think there's specifically blight loopholes for IP, yep. Okay.
I'm considering this progress.
Yeah.
And, and I thank you guys for, and I apologize to be. I'm giving you back, I'm giving you back, I'm giving you back on this, but. And like Ken says, we find things down the road that are still wrong, but I really wanna present something that I think is possible, not just. But feel something from another town and present it and say, this is what we're gonna do. So. I appreciate. The time you guys have been spending on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, um, table agenda item nine A until after executive session, if I could.
Move to table, um. Agenda, item nine A, discussion and authorization for settlement authority regarding Watts versus County East Windsor. Until now, one. Um, executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
opposed, okay. Mr. Tower Hopper. I think you should start with a joke.
Not related.
So there was a guy with five cars in his yard. Good evening, thank you for having me tonight.
And you put them up for sale.
Well. I understand, I, you all pretty much know my background is automotive, I grew up in the car business and my son and I built cars, and I'd like to go back to that. So I feel everybody's pain. That's all I'm gonna say, I, I have no opinion either way. If you tell me I can't have it in my driveway, then I'll figure out a place to put it, cuz I have a very small garage.
But your wife will be on our side anyways.
Yeah. Anyways, I'm here to discuss two things, and then, what's first on your agenda, the fertilizing, okay, so, um. I did my due diligence, it was under twenty thousand, so I didn't have to go out sealed bid. I got three prices, I have them here, I think you guys a very fancy Excel spreadsheet, and I will say I did this all on my own, because Teresa was on vacation last week. And, um, I've come to the conclusion that, um, True Green is our actually most inexpensive person to go with. Uh, I would like, I mean, they have some great services. Um, the money's already in the budget, um, two, two reasons why I wanna go with an outside company is, one is we don't have the applicator's license that we probably should have, we don't train or have the safety and, you know. And, and three is I want the town hall and the parks and everything to just start looking good. You know, we've got, you know, the middle of the summer comes, we've got crabgrass, we're mowing crabgrass. Um, we're working hard up at Abbey Road, and we have very nice grass up there, but the grubs are killing us no matter what we do, we need a professional to come in and help us. Melissa has it in the budget, actually, the cost factor of doing the parks. Um, is what we budget for anyways, well, we spend on, and we only do two out of the four places that we have listed here. And then I threw the caveat of the, the two town buildings, which would come out of, uh. Not, not parks and rec, it would come out of our, our, um, facilities budget anyways. Well, that's why I'm here, I'm just asking for y'all to allow me to go into a service agreement with True Green.
Questions or comments?
I, actually, I think doing the professional thing is probably a good idea, um, I know we've had some situations. Um, my one concern was, um. Is pesticides. So we're talking when we, these early spring, late sprint, late spring, early summer, late summer, those are all. And it's pelletized, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, as you probably might guess, my concern is pollinators of all sorts, not just the honeybees, but all pollinators, so. I think that plan pays care of that.
I know, it's more cost effective for us to some, some itself too.
Yeah, obviously.
I mean, we're not, the labor's not there. Other questions or comments?
So have we used True Green?
No, I reached out to four different companies, or three different companies, as you can see, and they came in. I mean, we've used BB in the past, BB's done, uh, the green for the veterans, we took that over this year, I guess, and, um. They helped me out with the dog pond at the end of last year, because I was having some problems up there. But that was it.
You're talking BB?
BB, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I, I've tried True Green, and I was just not happy with the results. Just putting that out.
Well, I mean, i- in the policy, it is, it within our purview to, to refuse any bid for any reason or no reason. So, I mean, if, if you don't wanna go with the low bit, the difference between the low bidder and, and the second one, it's only like
Fifty bucks at that.
Yeah, it's.
Was there another reason? You were true green?
Their reviews were great, outside of the one I just got, um. They, they're actually, you know. BB didn't include a line, now I don't know, and, and I tried to reach out to him, but he's on a fishing trip. Uh, if it's part of one of the four applications he's doing. Uh, BB's also doing rub in the middle of the summer, where the other two companies recommended it be done later in the fall. So.
But you realize that won't fix your problem until next year.
Well, that's why we have a lot of water, we'll, we'll flood them out, um. You know, I've done business with BB landscaping, for, I've known, I've, I've known them for their whole career and and I trust what they're gonna say and do. But they are groundskeepers, they're not, you know, they're, they're just taking out the fertilizers, and that's the True Green and, and the green meadows, I love green meadows. But it's just too much. Yeah. I mean, it's a one-year contract, if it doesn't work out, well, not, it's not even a one-year contract, it's just an agreement. And it's just a matter of me replying to his email, and he'll get us on the schedule.
I'm not familiar with green metal, but green metal has in their proposal with overseeding.
Well, that's actually, that's why.
That's why that, that.
That's why it's way over there, and, uh. Uh, that would be something that, you know, we would have to try to figure out how to fund, because it's not in the budget. So.
If we're not gonna overseed any of this stuff, and there's crabgrass and all of that, it's never gonna change, no matter what True Green puts on there.
First, the town hall, let's just talk about the town buildings, we'll forget about the parks for now.
Yeah.
The town hall and the police department have never been fertilized in the eleven years I've worked here. In order to establish grass, we need to start with fertilizer. I believe the best time to overseed is in the fall, and, you know. Early August, and let it set up and start growing in September. We, we have an overseeder, we just finished overseeding today. Where we filled in for two baseball fields, and up at the park, we overseed the fields up here. We can handle overseeding most of it. It's just a matter of, we really need to get a fertilizer, we really need to build the grass that we have up, and then start, I think if we tried overseeding in the spring, you know, I think we need to put the program in first. I mean, we're thatching for the first time since I've been here, we're gonna thatch it. So, you know, we're trying to take more, more proactive to try to make everything look better, I mean, ultimately you know, we could use irrigation at, like here and at the police department, and then we'd really have nice grass, but we don't, so we have to I'm, I'm thinking, we build up on the fertilizer, we start a good program, we stay with the program, we overseed in the fall. And, you know, we build from there, and, you know, we start establishing good roots, and, I mean. This is East Windsor, it's sandy soil, everything grows. You know, I mean, we, we have four beautiful trees in the front yard, we couldn't get them to grow. Remember the ones that were donated? By somebody. I don't remember who, but I remember digging holes. So, that being said, that's my suggestion on that, and I'm more than willing to go with whomever, they're all gonna do basically what I'm looking for.
Any other questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize public parks to enter any fluid agreement with True Green resources. Attached.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Mister Tower Hopper. Okay, my second. Reason for being here is. I, um, recently. Working on my furthering education through CCMO. I took a webinar on cybersecurity and cyber risks. And discovered that. I don't take IT as seriously as I do my other departments, I really, I don't, and I'm vowing to change that. And with changing that, when seeing this, um, video or webinar. I came across, um, some things that we definitely need to do right away, which we are. You don't have my PowerPoint? Oh, I worked hard on my PowerPoint, I do, I have seven whole slides. So. To start with, what, what, what I've implemented today at no cost to us, okay, is, um. Um, multi-factor authorization. Authenticity, authentic. Thank you. Which y'all probably realize that with your, um, emails. You know, you, you have to. Do, so that there, passwords. Passwords on. On the town computers and the town employees. Um. Were, were really lax with them, we have sticky notes on our computers, we, we use the same password, we don't reset after forty-five to ninety days. We've gotten out of that habit, we've fallen into a slump thinking nothing's gonna happen to us. So starting, starting. I was gonna start it on the first, but I don't think I'm gonna do that. Uh, we are going to change to a twelve-digit. Password. Not for your emails, your emails are different or protected, you're fine, Marine. Go to my next one. Please. Okay, so we need stronger passwords, we need to have our staff have stronger passwords, so we're better protected. We just need, uh, you know. It's a vulnerability, I'm not saying someone's gonna just come in and be able to sit down at a desk and use it, but we don't turn the computer off at night and. You know, a door doesn't get locked and there's a meeting, someone sits down, you know. We, we can't take chance of somebody sticking the thumb drive into our, our computer and now we have malware. And especially if it happens, God forbid if it happens in Jason's office or in the treasurer's office. You know, everything else, everybody else has basically cloud-based software anyways. So VPNs we already use, we use them strong, we, uh, update them constantly and we monitor them constant. And then, you know, malware, we're, we work on our malware all the time. It has been horrible lately, you know, I mean. Well, that's the emails and that's what gets to my next. My next slide, well, this is the passwords and you can see the more digits you have, the safer you are. I mean. You know, a, a, a six-digit. Password does not protect you at all. So obviously, we're not gonna go to eighteen, we're gonna stick probably around the twelve-digit password. With multi, you know, we're gonna send out emails and explain to everybody what we have to, multi-symbol, capital letters, lowercase. You can't use Bob one, two, three, four in the mark with an explanation point. It, it's, it's just not gonna happen.
And this slide is talking specifically about root force attacks.
Yeah.
I can think of two attacks right off the top of my head. That will turn that purple section all the way down, so you, you won't even have like the green or the yellow or the orange.
Right, it's, it's ridiculous and, and I know you work in a more secure environment than we do, but. It's, you know. I don't want anything to happen. Next. Please. So this comes to my pitch. This is a barracuda unit. This is a unit that's ba- basically cloud-based and what happens is all our emails go through it, and if there's a threat, what will happen is. And that attachment, it will get opened, you, the, the user will get an email, the email and click on it. And they will get a warning to say that this possibly could be a spam email or corrupt your system. Do you want to continue? They push continue, then what happens in the barracuda unit, it opens up on the cloud outside of our system and allows them to move, get that email. And potentially it was spam or it was something, and then from there. We can move forward to bringing it in or discard it because it was spam now. If you go to the next one now, it'll tell you, this one. Isn't this one? Okay. That's a projected to twon- twenty-two-seven. And that's in trillions of dollars. Of what they're projecting, and this, this is, this is from the FBI, did a little research with the FBI, the cyber unit. For. For the cost of this, which. What I'm gonna do, ask your permission for me to ask them to add it to my budget next year, we're looking at about sixteen thousand dollar cost a year. To protect us. It's all based off users and how many users we have. It's also based off, um. Based off how many units we have with the other protection that I want to do and. Uh, but I need, I need roughly about fifteen thousand, I can fund it, my IT budget this year to July, per, to start it, it's a monthly fee. Or I can go yearly, but they're not gonna give me a break, so I'll say I'll take the month. Um. And I think I let you guys all know that I'm, I'm doing patchwork now, so once a month. We're doing patching, we're going in and checking for vulnerabilities, doing any updates on everybody's individual PC. So you can go to my next one, which is a little scary, is that one the scare of this? This, this was just last year and. Who gets hit the worst? You know. Government facility, facilities is, is up. And then the next one is just, uh, basically, you know, what. What the objectives are to do to protect us the best we can be protected. I mean, we're, we're at a good place now. Where, you know, we. We're down to having one vulnerability for anybody to be able to hack and, and the chances of them getting in that way is slim to done. Um. And. You know, it, it's just something that we have to take serious because if something ever happens. We're all gonna regret it. Me more than any.
Yeah, so I'm glad to hear. This barracuda is pretty good, there's others out there that are good as well, but, um. I'm really. I guess I'm disappointed that the cyber audit that we did prior did not apparently contain a physical aspect to it. Because the, the password or I think should have been picked up on any of it.
They did a vulnerability, it was more of a vulnerability. Right, to see where our weaknesses are. Now, this. This I picked up just.
Yeah.
From doing, you know, I, I read a little bit. Honestly. I, I've, I've changed my old attitude towards it anyways, I need to make time for IT and I don't. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'll be perfectly educated and I don't, and I vowed that I will. Well, I need to do a better job at it.
It's a full-time job. So there's nothing, I don't think you should be.
Well.
I mean, I think I, I, I hold you to your vow.
Yeah.
Right, but don't feel bad about it. But, uh, there are some serious issues and I read in something the other night that I could, I, I'll bring up later, but, uh. Yeah, like there should have been. The password thing should have been a part of our security audit, because they should check the policies too, so we need to, when we do a security audit again. We're gonna need to take a, a good look at what they're offering and if they can offer certain things. On a checklist, then we should go with somebody else. Um, and then physical security, there's, I have a, I have a couple of things right now, number one, like you just mentioned, the USB thing.
Um.
But there's a couple of other things and I won't bring them up in public forum, but. Um, yeah, I think it's a good idea, we gotta do more.
I, I will say, I, I, I give Joe a lot of credit for, uh, his management of, of this function for the town. Especially since the cybersecurity audit, which was now a year ago. He, he has taken this very seriously.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
I don't let anybody VPN in, not even him.
I, I can't.
Nobody VPN, I'm the only one that VPNs it, and I have. I mean, I have a town computer, what, what makes me nervous are laptops. Where employees take laptops home or go to. Search Starbucks because, you know, it's Saturday and I'm on my day off and, and, oh, you know, let me check my emails, let me do that. My work is downloaded, they come in and they plug it into my system. That. Scares me. But.
Because of the continuing work that he's done to, to. Kind of tackle this ever, ever-changing. Threats. Um. There's a, there's a new cost that we didn't have the information for when our budget was put together, and so what, what he's asking to do is, is to, when he presents to the board of finance. Next week?
Yes, on the third, I got a, I got a whole week.
To increase his IT budget reflective of this, this new expense that. He's bringing to us. Um. This isn't one of those things where we could prepay for the year, it's a monthly expense, so it's gotta be funding that's, that's actually built into the operating budget. Um, so if we want to address the issue. What his ask is, as I understand it, is if we're okay with him asking to increase the IT budget. To allow this.
Yeah. I just thought this was the proper way to do it. Absolutely, it's about the much, you know, I mean, it's, it's there, you know, I mean, I can. I can fund it the rest of this year, it'll push me back on. Doing a couple of things that I wanted to do, but this is way more important. I mean, we're in a good place with the replacement program, you know, we're, we're in a good place in IT, we just finished putting. Um, access points, the BPW. Just tighten up that security rather than have wifi. Um, so, and, you know, the police department already has them, the only building now that doesn't have them is the annex. Social services, so. But even the senior center, we have access points there downstairs in the fleet, we got rid of all our wifi connections, so. We're, we're, you know, we're, we're doing our due diligence, we're working hard at trying to protect us. This protects. Me- mostly emails and, you know. An, an error by, you know, judgment, oh, you know, that and click on it, so. It happens, I mean, in human error is human error, there's nothing we can stop it. But, you know, we get, we allow people to plug into that computer all the time. Firewall against getting into the server. But any good hacker can do anything, I mean, these guys are incredible what they can do.
So. Are you guys comfortable with, with Joe increasing? The IT budget to, to reflect this?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'd be around fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand seven hundred. But I think I can, I might work that number down a little anyways.
Oh, yeah.
And it's with our consultant who, you know, built our system, so, and it's just a matter of. The barracuda is just a, a cloud-based. And they're the best people to do it because. They'll, I don't have to let anybody else into my server, let anybody, you know, we'll stick with the same people and they do really well by us, I'm. They, they do, they don't charge us for a lot of stuff, they take care of us when we take care of us and. That's why I have extra service money this year because we haven't had to do any of the crazy stuff.
The WPCA is a town agency. We have our own budget. We need to contribute our portion to make this work.
What do you mean? You're, you're not in our system. You don't, you're not even on our network.
They do use town email.
Yeah, but that's just. That's just me giving them licenses, this is the protect our server, our.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
They, they, they should be doing something similar.
We're working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, you're building your network now.
We are working.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do you want, do you want an actual motion or you just?
Well, just as long as you guys are okay with me increasing my budget.
Yeah. We appreciate the due diligence in terms of looking into this and. Free light from us.
Yeah, I apologize, it's not sooner, but. I couldn't put it in sooner, but. Yeah, well, that too, yeah, well, that's thanks to somebody forcing me to educate myself. And I'm three credits sure. Fulfilling my CCMO for this year.
You're ahead of me, but all you gotta do is go to the convention.
Oh, you have to have personal development? You have to have certain things, you know. Just can't randomly just have credit.
I, I can't develop any more personally, this is.
Apparently, I'm the one who needs to work that.
Thank you, Joe. Hey, if you could just, uh, reflect that, that the consensus of the board is to support the increase of our IT budget to include the barracuda system. Barracuda like the fish. Skid stairs. Or, I'm sorry. Four-wheelers. ATVs, snowmobiles are all considered more vehicles. You have to register that. And say, thank you. And if anybody cares about the score, I, I, I apologize about my facial expression, but I was watching basketball while you guys were.
What's it scored?
Oh, uh. Oh, and, and I had to pick, I have to wait for the commercial break. So, um, we're gonna move on to tax refunds?
I'm moved to approve the tax refunds totaling three thousand five hundred eleven dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Made in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
UConn sixty-two. Arkansas forty-one.
I'm just gonna watch it later.
Oh.
You were not.
That, that was the men, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Uh, all right, and Michigan. Michigan, ninety-two. Kansas State is ninety-one, they've got three minutes left.
That's good, Ken.
So the East Windsor Diversity Council in collaboration with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education has now held one of three successive discussions on diversity, equity and inclusion. These facilitated discussions are a great way of gaining better understanding of perspectives of others. The next one, which I highly recommend, will be on April fifth at six-thirty at the Broadbrook Elementary School. Um, everybody is encouraged to come and join that conversation, it, it was. The second time I'd seen the first presentation and, and Joe did a great job, the next two will be even better. On March fifteenth, as you all know, the budget request for the Boards of Education and Selectmen were presented by Dr. Tudor and me. Board of Finance has now begun their role in the formulation of the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and as they work through their budget workshops. The public is welcomed and encouraged to participate. Presentations from the Boards of Education and Selectmen begin, uh, begin at a mil rate increase of only point one-one mils. It's my hope that the Board of Finance will work towards a no-mil increase this year, which means no tax increase. Um, I'm happy to help them achieve that goal however I can. On March sixteenth, I was delighted to join fellow municipal leaders from Enfield, Summers, Southfield and Southfield at the North Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce's annual economic development breakfast. So much of economic development is out of the control of, of local municipalities, it's all about, you know, location, 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 what is the market demand, what is the, the. Security inputs, what's the nexus to transportation, all that, that is beyond our control. Um, but establishing a business-friendly climate in our community really is essential to seeing any success there. I was very happy to share some of the things that we're doing successfully and to learn about what our neighbors are doing as well. We're continuing to work towards the re-establishment of a youth service bureau in the town of East Windsor, thanks in large part to the initiatives undertaken by interim deputy chief, uh, of police Matt Carl. Deputy Chief Carl has been spearheading research and coordination of activities, lead personnel on town staff and in the school district. As well as making increases into other more established YSPs. As a team, we met as recently as yesterday and we're looking forward to bringing back to the sport, uh, whatever appropriate next steps are very soon. Um, coming up on March twenty-ninth, next Wednesday. I've invited Tim Keeney, the first selectman of the town of Summers and a retired naval captain and Navy SEAL. To come to the East Windsor Senior Center to share his experiences as a SEAL and also as the leader of the dive rescue team for the Skylab Two mission. I've seen Captain Keeney's presentation before and it is simply awesome. Um, anyone with an interest in topics of Navy, Naval Aviation or the Space Program would love it. That presentation is gonna be next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at twelve-thirty PM at the Senior Center. It passes prologue, it should be about forty-five minutes and then Q and A, it's, oh, really, it is fantastic. Um, I, I, I certainly am looking forward to that and I hope other people will come to that as well. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny will be held at the Senior Center on April first from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. Breakfast will include the usual breakfast fare, pancakes, sausage, brew, juice, milk, coffee. Um, no tickets are required, ahead of time, you can buy tickets at the door, they're tagged only six dollars per adult, three dollars per child and the. Proceeds go to benefit scholarships for the Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Program. Um, and just a reminder, the town, and, and I'm gonna update this once the new ordinance, uh, that we passed last night takes effect for veterans, but. The town did recently pass a new elderly property tax credit program, the assessor's office is accepting applications now through May fifteenth. The town did recently pass a new elderly property tax credit program. The assessor's office is accepting applications now through May fifteenth. Qualified households will receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tax credit in their July bill. Um, it'll follow the same income guidelines and enrollment schedule as the, um, uh, state circuit breaker program. And that's all I have. Marie.
I have no meeting scheduled.
You got lucky. Simon Baker.
Oh, okay, um, planning and zoning had a very light, uh, schedule and in fact, there's really nothing to. Uh, talk about for, for them this time around. Uh, the diversity meeting was, did not have a quorum, but they met anyway just to. Um, they didn't meet, but they had an informal discussion, uh, just to make sure that they had the advertising and whatnot. Put together for the April fifth diversity and equity and inclusion meeting that they're having. Um, and that's all I've had so far.
All right, rocking and rolling.
Okay. On March thirteenth, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I must note that I was appalled and did not condone some of the public participation at that meeting directed towards a staff member. Members of the public are always encouraged to participate and give their feedback. However, they should do so in a professional and respectful way. Members of boards and commissions are volunteers and town staff is hired to act in the best interest of the community. Although residents may not always agree with decisions made, aggressive behavior is never acceptable and it should never be tolerated. The commission voted to keep the gate fee at East Windsor Park the same as last year. And to increase the Abbey Road field game rate by fifty dollars, bringing it to a hundred and fifty dollars a game. Um, basically because of the new lighting that will be installed. The, you already spoke about the breakfast with the Easter Bunny. Um, the softball field at East Windsor High School will be named after Karen Drake. And that dedication will take place at a ceremony on April thirteenth at three-thirty PM, uh, with a rain date of April fourteenth. At the same time. The kids fishing derby sponsored by the Broadbrook Angling Club will be held on May sixth this year. And Parks and Recreation did, uh, donate two-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards the prizes. Tim Islook was able to raise enough money to complete round one of the soccer shelter for the Abbey Road Soccer Complex. This is an Eagle Scout project and he is working on raising the rest of the money to complete the second set. The Arts and Culture Committee was unable to hold their meeting on March fourteenth due to lack of a quorum. But they did hold a special meeting, um, this past Tuesday, which I did attend. The committee collaborated with the Broadbrook Elementary School to display students' artwork here in the back of this room and at the Warehouse Point Library. The committee will be holding an Arts and Culture Day at East Windsor Park on Saturday, May twentieth from twelve to four. The, very excited to be putting this on. There will be live music, vendors and origami activity for kids. A pottery demonstration and various foods from different countries. The event is free to attend and T-shirts will be handed out to the first fifty kids. The photography contest will be extended, um, until May twelfth to encourage additional participation. And collaboration has begun again with the American Heritage River Commission with an artist to carve an owl. And a possible blue heron at the Melrose Trail. The artist is hoping to have the owl completed in time for Connecticut Trails Day on June third. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Um, I only had one meeting last week and that happened on Tuesday, March fourteenth. For Connecticut Water, I'm disappointed to miss that meeting because I really enjoy their meetings and they only have one once a quarter. But I was out of town on vacation and they had it, so I did not get to attend that. I have nothing for you.
Thank you, sir. Public participation is the public's second opportunity to address members of the board. Same rule as the last time. I'll start with the people in the room. You can kindly state your name and address and we'll state your business and then I will turn to anybody who's with us online. Yes, sir, name and address.
When you sharing? Deepo Street. Okay, where do I start? Thank you. Well, because I think you have the best interest of the town listening. To your comments and. A lot of my thoughts have been answered by you, by your thoughts. Um. Okay, try to make sense of where I wrote down here. A lot of it's to interpretation and I think that's a very, very important part to look at. Just because we can interpretate this many different ways, I mean. You know, that's, that's just needs to be. Pay careful attention to. Towns that have blight ordinances all around us, I looked at the different ordinances and some of them are really. Amazing, strong, 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 yeah. But I noticed also that towns that had councilmen are the ones that have these very stringent ones. And all the selectmen, uh, run towns, Ellington, East Windsor, Summers, they don't have this. They don't have that, that's true, because we are farm towns and I think we're losing track of it, not we. Some people are losing track of the fact that we're not South Windsor. With, with the type of industry, they've got huge buildings that they, they're in, in their town. You're right on the street and there's huge. Windsor Locks, Windsor Locks has an international airport. They have a, you know, major aircraft industry there. And, and the same goes for other towns around. They have a lot of industry and we're a farm town. Like, again, I, I look at this picture on a wall here and, you know, what I see on the back wall and. I, I just really think that we need to keep that in mind. Um, some of this may, I think Marie said, you know, it's gonna pit neighbor against neighbor because somebody's gonna say. Dates, I know it's him that told on me, boy, I'm gonna think, I'm finding something for, you know, I, I just think it's gonna pit people against each other. I really do, and, and that bothers me. And, um, again, taking pictures, you, you can take pictures. That's one of the topics that came up, right? But I can send my little four-propeller thing up and take pictures of anybody, any of your yards. You know, when your wives or husbands are out there in their swimsuits, I can take pictures. And, uh, you know, that's something you might wanna think about. Taking pictures might not be the best answer to that, or, or maybe. What is some kind of a hold on how do you take pictures? Something, you know, you can take pictures anyways. Okay, uh, and a lot of this goes back and forth with like this, like that, but you know. I see another section here that says, uh. Of code violation is zoning and building codes. Why are we talking zoning and building codes for blight? That's a whole different story. That's, that has nothing to do with blight. They got their own entities. They take care of their own stuff with the blight and the, uh. The, uh, the, I mean, uh, the codes and variations. And, you know, the conditions, um. Imminent danger. I, I, I think that. Charlie is not spot on when he says safety because that, that's what we really should be looking at here, is safety. Not whether, you know, Joe covers his, his window in his, uh, eighteen-hundred house because of the bricks around that are falling in his, his basement. You know, the, the law says that we have to have certain, you know, fences, like the man said. In building code, but you know, the, the building cones didn't exist in eighteen hundreds that, that had the same thing. Um. Let's see here. And, and, uh. The warnings and citations wherever, okay? The state says from ten to a hundred dollars, no less than ten dollars. When they start fining people, but yet we, we run right into citations. So assess a fine of a hundred dollars per day. Doesn't, doesn't get back to the ten bucks a day. You know, why a hundred? You're gonna put a lot of people in a lot of problems if you, you follow this hundred-dollar rule. You know, five days, hu- five hundred bucks, that's a lot of money just to, to come up with, you know, and, um. Lot of old people in town. I think the old people are starting to upgrade the, uh, younger people. Um, you know, a lot of us have what we have because we have it and can't. Provide more for ourselves because we're on a fixed income. And, uh, you know, we, we have a blight ordinance now. What's wrong with that? Why don't they modify that? Does anybody ever look at, see in what the blight ordinance is or, you know, checking that out?
Property maintenance code, uh, not a blight ordinance. It wasn't drafted in a way that it caught, kept, kept up with statutory changes. Which is why we're even having this conversation.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I'm like, I'm, I'm happy to see you address the, uh, motor vehicle, motor vehicle. You know, anything that runs, like Jordan mentioned too, that runs, you can stick it on the road. It's a motor vehicle, you know. A wagon with a four horsepower over there, you'll get your clock.
Oh, wait, watch, okay, twinged.
I was right, I was right twice tonight. Thank you.
Let's not make that a habit.
Yep, and if we have. More people on the payroll, that's more taxes too. You know, these two people that were here, I know they're, they're concerned about. The blight and, and processing and everything, but they have, they have, uh. They don't have the manpower. You're, you're gonna have to two, hire two, three people, more people. And benefits in the whole yard, the whole night yard there, right? And I think also, looking at the house, where is the blight? Side yards, front yards, that really has an impact on, on the neighborhood. Backyards, not so much, you know. If you have, uh, something back there that may be considered blight and you put a tarp over it, is that help out the situation? Um, blight can be considered. A corridor wood that's been sitting there five years versus, you know, cover it up or something, or, you know, maybe your extra lumber or parts. Cover it up, just make it more sightly than unsightly. Uh, and if this is made in ordinance, that is putting a law in our town. You know, I'm a firm believer that every time a new law comes in, it's taking a little bit of our rights away. And if this ordinance is put in. It could be modified because it's a law and it could be modified. And I don't know, I'm not sure about this, but. I don't think you have to really come back to the people to ask them if you want, you know, you have permission to modify. Can be just modified.
No, you, you need to go through the same.
Okay, I don't really know that, but then again, um. You guys are here today and I really appreciate, I wouldn't be here every week, every two weeks, whatever. But it thinks so. When you're gone, what are we gonna do? When these people are going and they have their opinions and everybody's opinion changed, what are we gonna do? So think about that when you put it something forth to the people and, and have it become a law. We've got to run out of time here, so let that be the end.
Thank you. I'm gonna let public participation continue. I have to run to my office and grab my power strip or we're gonna lose the recording, so.
Now, why don't you ask Doc?
Hey, you want my? No.
Yes, please.
Christopher Sherry, Deepo Street, Robert. I think the best way to keep this. Blackened table going is to vote these people in again. That's all I have to say.
She likes you. We won't let Jason hear that though, yeah?
I thank you for the kind words, but some of us have. New things that we'll be doing in the future, but, um, hopefully when we get to a place that's will learn, learn some things and. Um, you'll have a opportunity to address them at a later time.
That just makes me nervous.
Hopefully you'll continue coming because public input is always helpful.
Yeah.
Um, and this ordinance is a perfect example of that.
Yeah.
And I turn it back over to our first black man, Jason Moss. Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, Tom Lancer, twenty-seventh rural circle. Uh, I apologize, I wasn't here for the presentation on the blight ordinance, nor the first set of, uh, public comments. Um, what I had wanted to say, at one point, there was, uh, the feeling from some people in town. That we didn't need a blight ordinance, that it should just not be. Put out there at all. Um. And I give you folks a lot of credit for trying to come up with something that's workable. And the issue that I have is with certain things that seem like obvious blight. And what I use as an example is when I drive down South Water Street. For a time, people were leaving mattresses, furniture and everything just right out there. I mean. I think to most people that's blight and I think we need something to be able to address that issue. So I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, there, there needs to be something that we can use to address certain things. So, um, I would encourage you to continue with the blight ordinance revisions, but. Um, earlier comments that we don't need one, um, that I saw on Facebook, I think is probably the wrong way to go. But there's gotta be something that would satisfy everybody, so I would encourage you to continue down that road. Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, probably. Thanks for putting up with me.
But this close.
I'm glad that your town statement, uh, he saw it on Facebook. It means I didn't do it.
Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself, state your business. Um. Okay. We will have a, a brief executive session and I mean that. In the scheme of things, um, if I could have a motion to go to an executive session to include just the five of us. Then there probably will be a vote afterwards. Uh, so I'll get the, I'll get the recording up.
I'm moved that we entered into executive session at nine oh eight PM.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor?
I, I oppose.
We are in executive session at nine oh nine.